I call this meeting to order for Tuesday, or no, I'm sorry, Wednesday, November fifth, two thousand twenty-five. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Susan Payne.
Here.
Mayor Protam Sharon McDonald.
Here.
Commissioner Crystal Guthrie.
Here.
Commissioner Stephen Burnett.
Here.
Commissioner Warren Robinson.
Here.
Commissioner Josh Riordan.
Here.
Commissioner Mark Tapley.
Here.
Madam Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Rachel. We're going to get started with the invocation led by Commissioner Robinson and the pledge led by Commissioner Riordan.
Would you join me in prayer? Eternal heavenly Father, bless each person who has attended city council meetings. It shows that their care and their compassion for this city. Lord, thank you for all of the elected individuals who spent their time and energy and resources to serve this city. Lord, none of us are perfect, but give us the wisdom, the knowledge, and the understanding that we may do our best so that Alamogordo may have its best. Lord, bless us to converse with one another in a sensible and kind way. Bless us to be colleagues and good communicators so that we may have the answer from both sides. Bless us to be patient with one another and bless us to always have what your son had, that amazing grace. If you'll do that, Lord, we will give you the honor, the glory, and the praise, and we'll do it in your son's holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Please follow me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get started tonight, I would like to congratulate our mayor-elect, Mayor Protam Sharon McDonald, if you'll join me. I'm very proud of you. You did great. You ran a great campaign and you got out there with boots on the ground, and that's what it took. So congratulations. And I'm looking forward to you taking over. All right, and with that, I will move on to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Guthrie. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second for Mayor Protam McDonald. Can we put up the vote, please? And motion passes seven zero. We will move on to public coffee. Excuse me. I have three people signed up. The first one is Craig Johnson.
My name is Craig Johnson, and I am reading a letter from Pastor Anthony Torres of Mountain View Church. Says, Dear City Commissioners, Mayor, and the City of Alamogordo, thank you for allowing this letter to be read at this city commission meeting this evening. My name is Anthony Torres, and I pastor Mountain View Church here in Alamogordo. It's been ten years now that my wife and I have been here. We are not from Alamogordo, and since we have been here, we have seen crime go up, shootings, overdoses, and suicides go up in the city and Otero County. Discussing funerals with my wife this week, I shared how I was saddened by how many children we have buried in our ten years of being here. And was thinking of just how many we have lost. As you know, our church offers free funerals to the community for those that don't have a church. And we have gotten many calls over the year and filled the gap with services for children that have gotten shot and passed away. It saddens my heart, and I have many concerns now that my granddaughter was born here. The truth is, we are losing our children to violence slowly, and we can't even see it as a city. Over the years, I have seen Extreme Amplitude be a beacon of light in this city by reaching our children and giving them a place to thrive. I take my granddaughter there and was blessed to see all the fun and laughter that the kids were having. It was pure joy. I believe that this is what the city needs more than ever, joy. I am asking the city commission to vote to give lead of funds to Extreme Amplitude, what a blessing this will be to our community, not just to families, but to our children. I ask you for this moment to think about the children. Think about what a great seed this will be for generations to come. Think about how this program could save a child's life and speak into it. Hear me when I say, my heart will never be healed after burying the children we have over the last ten years. It's something I was not ready for, but God is faithful. I believe sometimes as adults we can get sidetracked by budgets, meetings, deadlines, and people pleasing, that we forget that what's really important, and that's the future of the City of Alamogordo and our children. Thank you again for allowing me to, allowing my letter to be read. May God be with you all. Pastor Anthony Torres.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Janie Neal. And I'm sorry, I should have reminded everybody, if you can state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes.
My name is Janie Neal. I am the outgoing Kinder Director of Extreme Amplitude. Extreme Amplitude beats a ton to me. I walked in the doors, pregnant with twins and two little kids. And my daughter worked her way from the Kinder Program up to competition at six years old. Extreme Amplitude taught her hard work and endurance. It shaped her. And my son's also done Wild Boys. My twins have gone to Kinder classes with me. The community we have built at XA is like no other. I, as a mom, walked in sad, and I had no other identity besides being a mom for eight years. So I walked into XA, and I found myself again. I found a group of people that loved me and supported me no matter what was going on. Our parents in the back, my Kinder Kids, we have had parents who have also walked in that way, that have walked out with friends. We have built a community. Our kids get together outside of XA. Our families get together outside of XA. And that's really what our Kinder Program is rooted in, is in community as well as the gym. We all support each other. We're all there for each other. And I just cannot say enough on how much I've watched the growth of my program. And those funds to grow our program even more would just be changing for the community. I know a million dollars, two million dollars seems like a really lot of money to give to just a gym, but XA is so much more than just a gym. We are shaping the future leaders of our town. We're helping shape our Air Force community. And we're giving those families that are walking and not knowing anybody a chance to get to know somebody and connect with them. And so I just feel like it's very important. It's not just a gym. It's so much more for our community, and we could do even more than what we're doing right now for our kids, to provide them that safe place. So thanks for hearing me out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And finally, we have Jordan Turner.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Jordan Turner. I'm a veteran military spouse and a stay-at-home mom of seven years. Extreme Amplitude Gymnastics has transformed my family's life, and today I urge you to fund its new building so countless others can experience the same. In 2013, my husband was stationed here at Holloman and later moved to Langley Air Force Base, Virginia, where we met. After five and a half years, our family moved to Honolulu, Hawaii. Post COVID, we wanted to give our daughter some more social skills, so we enrolled her in gymnastics on base, which was basic tumbling and trampoline, which we thought was gymnastics. When orders brought us back to Holloman in 2023, my husband warned me, limited activities here mean long drives for anything fun, and our daughter and I would struggle after living in big cities our entire lives. I immediately searched for local gymnastics. Thankfully, Extreme Amplitude was just ten miles away. I emailed for a trial, and two weeks later, after arriving, we walked through the doors. My daughter's eyes lit up at his vaults, beams, and bars. She was about to discover real gymnastics. XA, sorry. XA has given her and hundreds of other students true skills, strength, confidence, healthy competition, and life lessons in a positive, inclusive environment. Coaches welcome every child with open arms regardless of their background or ability. Watching her grow has been one of my proudest parenting achievements. XA has transformed me as well. Homeschooling meant no job for me until about three months ago. After seven years out of the workforce, I submitted my resume. Echo's family-friendly policy lets staff bring kids to work, making it possible. The team embraced me, teaching me the role, and deepening my love for gymnastics through their passion. XA has uplifted my family in ways words cannot capture. Without a new facility, growth stalls, and families miss out on its magic. Our children deserve this beacon of opportunity. Please consider Echo's request. Invest in stronger kids, families, and communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all I had signed up. Yes, okay. All right, we're going to move on to the city manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protam, Commissioners. Congratulations to Commissioner Burnett and Mayor Protam. Just keep it real short and sweet. We have a bunch of projects out right now, and I will send you a comprehensive list as we're starting to wrap up some. We're putting new ones out. So I'll give you a list, but right now we have like Fire Station Two, Duck Pond. We have the tanks, the South Reservoir, Fairgrounds. We're working on getting that coat building put out, and then I just wanted to give an update. We have the, they did the walkthrough on the golf course. They provided a punch list. It's functioning, but we haven't accepted yet. They have to, there's a, some significant items that they need to complete, and so we're working through, through that. The timeline, I didn't ask about the timeline for that, but they just did the walkthrough. And then I also just wanted to mention that on the November eighteenth meeting, I will not be here, but I will have someone more than capable, probably Dave or Evelyn, standing in. I have a family thing that I cannot get out of right now. Well, I guess I don't want to get out of, I should say, and so I won't be here, or if I am here, I'll be here late, so I just wanted to.
When is that?
The next meeting, November eighteenth.
Gotcha, gotcha.
And that's all I got.
Okay. And remarks and inquiries by the city commission, and I want to apologize, Commissioner Burnett, I forgot you were running again. I mean, no, I didn't forget you were running again. I forgot you had an opponent because nobody else had an opponent except for the mayor, because apparently nobody wants to sit in our seats or something. I don't know. Anyway, so I apologize for that. Congratulations.
I get it.
Well deserved. Yes, sir.
Out there on the golf course that you had mentioned, the punch list, there's a gentleman that cares for an elderly lady whose house is on there, and it's on tres lago, so I'm just not sure which end. They hit her fence and damaged it. Last I talked to him, the contractor had never repaired it, so can you have them look into that?
Yeah, I know that Dave talked to the person yesterday and that he was going to get on it.
Okay, yeah, I think just before the contractor leaves town.
And congratulations to you, too.
And Mr. Patillo out here in the audience.
Oh, congratulations, Pastor.
That was a rough one, wasn't it? Your first campaign.
Stressful. I was hoping I'd lose. Also want to, you know, run in a race and throw your hat in the ring. It's, it's rough. And so I just want to thank everybody that threw their hat in the ring and signed up. I mean, you're new here. You've, you've seen how it is. It's rough, so. Anybody that had the courage to throw their hat in the ring, I just want to tell them thanks and, you know. You know how it is.
Yeah, apparently it's rough whether you're running or not. I don't know. Anyway.
It is. It's stressful.
Um.
Doing the job is stressful, you know.
What's that?
Doing the job is stressful, you know. You know how it is.
I'm done. It's hard. It's hard. This seat is hard. I know they're all hard, but this seat is really hard. Okay, does anybody else have anything? Yes, sir.
Stephanie, I know we talked about the golf course and the. Yeah, the bid.
The, the RFP for the, so, yes.
I had mentioned to you that, or asking you kind of sort of what was on it, but as far as maybe adding the with and without maintenance if they wanted.
So to fill everyone else in, Commissioner Burnett, and I spoke after the last meeting about the RFP for the nineteenth hole and the golf pro. And so reviewing it, I'm hoping to get it out here soon. He did bring up a good point. There are some people who would like to take over maintenance, and there are some people who don't want to take over maintenance. And I believe we could do a bid alternate, put them in as, if you want to do it, what's your price? If you don't want to do it, here's your price. So I think we might look at putting that into it. So we're going to talk to purchasing and get some more details of what that's going to look like.
And then, oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Also, since the water department or the billing department's closed during the day, is it possible that we can waive that $2 online fee? But they have to pay online because we're kind of forcing them to pay online.
That brings me to another question I probably should have covered in, in the city manager report. I had, the furlough, the question was asked, I believe by Mayor Payne, somebody asked, because of the furlough, if we would be willing to not close accounts or waive, not waive pay, but put off the payments until they can make it. That would have to come before you in a resolution if that's something you all wanted to do. So if that's something y'all want to do, we can bring that forward, and then I can look at the next, that question on the $2 online fee or whatever it is.
How would that work if it's lifted by then?
I know. While you would still.
We could waive late fees, probably.
We could waive late fees, but my concern was them being disconnected because of it.
So we, yeah, that was the concern.
Be similar to during COVID. Remember, we, we waived, what did we do? We did something with shut offs where we didn't have staff during any shut offs during COVID.
There was no shut offs during COVID.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or I don't think we did.
So that's my concern. My concern is them being shut off.
It, it still has to come before commission.
But there has to be a resolution, correct?
So it, it's really not going to do us any good, then?
Not for the cutoffs.
Because I don't know. Elections are over, and I just have a feeling we're opening back up the government.
So if they don't, we'll still bring something forward. If they got disconnected and we charged them the disconnect fee, we could refund them that.
Yeah.
I mean, it's after the fact, but.
I guess we should have thought about that.
Yeah.
Well, I can't think of everything. All right.
Then I have one more thing. I want to say thank you to the space hall. This month is epilepsy awareness month, sharing the same month and color as domestic violence. So I want to say thank you to them for lighting their building up in purple, so.
Very good.
I got two more real quick I forgot about. Our speed bump, we got over there on Florida between Sixteenth and Catalina. Do we have that on our list to address?
Yeah.
And then, I was picking my daughter up from school today, Fourteenth Street right here, right there between the basketball courts and Oregon School. While we're doing all that work on Oregon, would it be possible to either overlay that? That road is really, really bad, and we did like a piece of it on the Washington side for some reason. But is there any way they, they could resurface that while they're there working? Probably wouldn't cost a whole lot, and it would really improve that area.
Might have to be a change order, but I can look at streets. If streets can do it.
I don't know if there's any utilities in that that cross through or not.
Because that's going to be part of the whole, I mean, it's a couple of years down the road, but I could ask, see if that's either in the plan or if it's not, if that's something we can add or have streets do.
Okay, it's just a really bad road, and where they're working, it's closed. It'd be easy to fix right now.
Is that the bridge you're coming at the?
Well, not really. It's not a bridge. It's just that hump that goes over between the basketball and Oregon Avenue.
Yeah.
Or basketball and Oregon School.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a bridge over the ditch, but it's not like really a, it's just a small piece of.
It's kind of what we would consider a bridge because it goes over the ditch.
Yeah, okay.
They already repaved the portion that's over the, the bridge itself.
But you want the part that's not over the bridge.
Because it's more pothole than it is road.
Okay.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, so I, what did I do? Oh, I went to the Air Force Ball on Saturday night, and I talked to Colonel Etheridge and Chief Ford while I was there. And they wanted to convey that they are really excited about what is going on in our city. And they had a meeting with, and I'm sure I'm going to get this wrong, but they're, they report to like San Antonio, I think it is, isn't it, or something? Something like that. And they spoke with, they had a meeting with them or whatever and, and sort of conveyed what's going on here. And they're extremely pleased with what they're seeing in Alamogordo, so they asked me to share that with everybody. And, you know, of course, housing, housing is an issue, obviously. And, but in terms of everything else, they're getting a lot of feedback from the airmen and airmen families that seem to be pretty pleased with everything that's going on. So that was a positive, I think. Obviously, we have a long way to go, but, but we're going in the right direction. And anyway, I thought I would share that, and I know that there is more, and I can't think right now, so I'm just going to leave it at that. Do you have anything?
I just wanted to say thank you to my community. I just, I just thought that in the last three months since I declared that I was going to run for mayor, my church family, my pastor, who is dealing with cancer right now. He stepped up and just took care of a lot of things to help me out. And also, one of the ladies in my district, she has dialysis, and she took on some jobs to do. And I had a neighbor who actually helped to advertise my campaign. And I just thought, I said, you know, sometimes when you have community over competition, you know, I just felt like, even before the election, I told him, I, I felt like a winner. So I wanted to say thank you to my district, District Number Five. They were amazing, and I just want to say thank you. I said, because sometimes you think you're in this race by yourself. You think you're doing things on your own, but it takes a village to raise a, a child, but it takes a whole city to elect a mayor. So I'm thanking everybody who participated because it was outstanding. And every time somebody did something to me or did something for me, I just started crying. And so that's still going on, so that's one of the reasons why I thought I wasn't going to say anything. But I'm so grateful because sometimes you get to see a lot of ugly. But the goodness and the type of people that I ran into while I was doing the campaign, it was really overwhelming. And I, I just can't say enough nice things about the people who actually joined in to help get me elected, so thank you.
And you know, that's the thing about Alamogordo, for all the drama, and there is some drama, most people in our city, they just don't care. They just are trying to live their life and make a living for their family and do good. And it's never going to be overshadowed by the drama. The drama is this small in a city like this. And so, and I've seen that. I agree with you because I've seen that. Most people just, I have seen the best of people. I really have. I've seen the worst of people, but I have mostly seen the best of people in our city. And, and of course, it's always disheartening to see, you know, that try to get overshadowed. But, but we have really good people in our city, and we've seen that. We've seen that people come together when, you know, we lost an officer or, or we've had other events in our city that, traumatic events. We see our city come together because we really do. For, for all the dumb petty little things, overall, most people just live their life and they love our city. And so congratulations again. You worked really, really hard, and you deserved it. And I got to say, the turnout, the voter turnout, I mean, I know it was only like forty-three hundred people, but that's at least thirteen, fifteen hundred more people than I've seen before in a, in a election since, you know. And so that was really impressive. People came out to vote, and that's what we need. We need voter participation. We need more of that. We need double. We need triple that amount, but we need at least that. So anyway, and I'm going to mention something else just because I am, my head is still spinning. Did anybody see the article in the Carlsbad paper about the commission and the, and the mayor over there? They gave themselves three hundred percent raises. Anybody here ever got a three hundred percent raise? I'm like, I want a raise like that, not just as mayor, but just in general. Yeah, that's crazy. They did, it's crazy, and it's so crazy that I had to mention it. I'm not suggesting anything. I would have a heart attack if anybody gave themselves a three hundred percent raise here. But if you haven't read it, you should go read it because I was pretty stunned. So anyway. And with that, if nobody else has anything, I'm going to move on. Okay, very good. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. Does anything, Betty have anything they want to pull off the consent agenda? No? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent? agenda? No? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? I have a motion for Mayor Proton McDonald. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Burnett. Can we put up the vote, please? And motion passes 7-0. And we had nothing removed, so we're going to move on to unfinished business. Item five, consider an act upon ordinance 1719 for first publication to approve a local economic development project for up to $475,000 secured assistance proposed by Extreme Amplitude. Echo.
Mayor, then.
Before, before we discuss this, does anybody have an issue with me sitting up there during this discussion?
It's fine.
I don't have an issue with you sitting here. I.
I can't vote on it, so.
Yeah, I prefer you didn't participate in the discussion, but I don't have an issue with you sitting here.
Okay, along those same lines, do any of you have an issue with me sitting up here and discussing or voting?
I, no. I'm going to tell you before we get started because you asked. I have received more phone calls than I care to about this, about this, this particular item. I've got emails. Emails are public information, so if anybody wants to see them, they can just ask for them. But I've received emails and phone calls and I'm not, I think we can all guess what they were about. And so I, you know, it's not me, it's the public. I'm not, like I said, it's all public information. So, but I do feel like I should at least let you know. I don't know if anybody else has gotten them, but it's, it's becoming a little daunting, to be honest with you. I, I understand the public's feeling on it.
With Commissioner Guthrie's question, I think was, does she have?
So she has no financial.
Yeah, and that about the timeframe.
She has no financial interest in it and she just goes as she was an owner. There's nothing legally that is.
Right. And that's my point.
Let that on the record. That way.
That was my point to it, is I received a lot of that. And I don't, I'm not going to discuss it anymore. You know, I guess that's really up to you legally. You can. But I just wanted you to know that I've received a lot of phone calls and emails and, yeah, okay. I'm sorry. That was my point to that. So, yeah.
That's why I wanted to bring it up because if it is uncomfortable or it puts a negative anything in the direction of what they're trying to do, or if there's any legal issues with me participating or voting, I by far do not want to cause any issues with that.
To re-echo the fact that you did disclose previous financial dealings with them. However, that's been years since. You have no current dealings in that state. So there's, at least from my legal opinion, I don't see any reason why you couldn't participate. But I do applaud you for bringing it to the commission to, to let them speak their mind on it or give you that option, or give them that option. But as far as legally, I don't see any issue in you participating and voting due to the fact that that connection has been severed for years now.
Okay. And does then, again, just the question, because I didn't get everybody's response, does anybody have an issue with me discussing and/or voting?
I, no. I'm, like I said, I thought that's up to you.
Sure.
Legally, you can do it. So that's up to you.
Okay.
And.
Mayor, Daryl has.
And if, if you don't mind, Mayor, just because this, this has been a spirited topic of discussion, has led to spirited stuff, if I could just give a brief statement outlining for the public and for the commission on the record, kind of the legal framework of what we're looking at. I know there's been a lot of concern raised by the commission and the public, just so that way there can be a on the record statement of kind of what the role is that the commission plays and what your guys' authority is, if that, if you don't mind.
Go right ahead.
Okay. So, and it's law and so we get paid by the word. We don't really, but so forgive me if it's a little long. But just before the commission proceeds to a discussion or vote on the matter of the LIDA fund allocation, I'd just like to briefly outline the legal framework and considerations relevant to the decision on the record. LIDA allows city, allows the city of Alamogordo to give publicly funded support to private groups and entities for qualifying economic development projects. That support must comply with relevant state and local law. The anti-donation clause prohibits cities from donating public funds to private groups unless some public benefits and safeguards ensure those benefits come forth. The city has evaluated the application and used the metrics of job creation, wages, and economic impact to recommend a funding level consistent with those numerical findings. The commission has full authority and discretion to approve an amount different from what has been presented as a recommendation. I advise that if there is a difference in allocations, that such approval be tied to a documented and qualified public benefit, quantifiable public benefit. If the decision of the commission is challenged, meaning the amount that's allocated, the reviewing court or agency would look at whether the city has documented a rational basis for its decision and whether adequate security measures for the public's funds were made. Commissioners acting in good faith and acting within the scope of their authority using information that has been presented to them are generally protected from being found personally liable should a violation be found. However, if the city is found by a court or state agency to have violated a provision of the anti-donation clause, the city would be required, or could be required, to recover the funds and the agreement would be subject to scrutiny by the fact finder. It is not my place to try and suggest or advocate for or against how the elected body decides how to utilize public funds. It is my job to ensure that the commission understands the legal framework so you as individual commissioners can vote on how to better promote and protect the interests of the citizens. The decision to fund ultimately rests with the commission. I strongly recommend that any motion approving funding includes findings on the record identifying the public benefits expected and how those benefits are weighed in determining an award amount. Thank you.
Thank you. You want to come on up?
Hello again.
Hello.
First and foremost, thank you for this opportunity. I want to take a moment to clarify some things for the community before I address some questions from the previous meeting. First off, I am not stealing or taking money from military housing. I know there have been a few articles written that have painted the situation to look that way and that's simply not the case. On October 14th, the commission and the mayor decided as a group that they would not be awarding LIDA funding to housing. After the meeting, many of the commissioners and the mayor shared their support and enthusiasm for the expansion of Extreme Amplitude. I'm unsure what changed between that and the meeting when Mr. Campbell with Cinderella Apartments was allowed to speak on the 28th. Not only did this go against, directly against what the commission had already made a choice about, but didn't afford the same opportunity to the other housing group Patriot Point. In addition, it had some negative effects on my business reputation. Regardless of whether this was right or wrong to have him present before the commission, it was rather insightful for me. I have had, I have not had a lot of guidance or coaching from Dr. Hernandez in the application process, so the last meeting brought a lot of clarity to the requirements of the LIDA process and the payback expectations. As a result, I have adjusted some of my projections to show potential growth over five years versus just year one. And unfortunately, my presentation did not send, so I don't have a PowerPoint to go with it. Mr. Maury just reviewed what LIDA is all about, and it's for the local economic development with the purpose of allowing cities to support their local businesses so that the towns and economies can grow and meet the needs of their communities. This included providing incentives to bring businesses to Alamogordo, specifically manufacturing call centers. And this was established in 1996. This ordinance was adopted, adapted in 2017 to provide cities more flexibility in the allocation of funds to meet the needs of their communities and the businesses within them. It shifted the focus away from manufacturing and call centers, which were not viable industries in New Mexico. Extreme Amplitude qualifies because we are a business that, excuse me, supplies a service to the general public. In my last two presentations, I've shared the benefit that Extreme Amplitude has bought to our, brought to our town in addition to what our expansion will bring. But to summarize, we are a multi-sport facility that allows children from our community to become high level competition athletes. We offer programs for all ages from tots to adults. We have created and maintained a supportive and safe mental health space for all who enter our doors. We have allowed males in our communities a place to embrace being a male and to bond over fitness. We are an active community partner and sponsor of groups throughout the city of Alamogordo. In addition, we've helped prevent at least four youth suicides. With the expanded space, we have the opportunity to further this positive impact. We'll be able to reach more families in our community through new partnerships, including with therapy centers, homeschool groups, and other organizations in Alamogordo. We will be able to host gymnastics competitions and breaking jams, which will bring families to our town who will stay in our hotels and eat at our local restaurants. On one of the slides I have, how LIDA is paid back. Extreme Amplitude is not only able to pay LIDA funds back through job creation, but also through the increase in GRT and by providing a service that is not available in Alamogordo, specifically gymnastics. On average, we are adding about six new jobs a year. I go into that a little bit further. As you know, I'm a gymnastics coach and not a builder, so at the last meeting, I did not do a good job at representing what the building actually is. The building is not just a shell. It is insulated. It has functional electricity and plumbing as well as a fire suppression system. The build out that I was speaking of is of the, to make the space more functional for the programs we want to add. This includes the classroom spaces, adding an additional bathroom in the back, and an office area. In the slide, I don't know if you're able to pull up the previous one, but I have the layout. In that new space, let me see if I can pull it up here. We have approximately 16 new classroom spaces. If you put eight kids in those spaces per hour, that comes out to 128 kids that we're able to have in our space per hour. You multiply that by three hours a night, that's 384 students that we have the possibility to have in our space each evening. Times four times a week, that's over 1,500 kids that we're able to have in our facility and in our programs. That's a potential growth of over 400% of our current enrollment. Our average monthly income with those 1,536 children would be $1,000, $153,600 a month. That's an estimated GRT of over $12,000 a month, with an estimated annual GRT of nearly $150,000 a month. Within five years, each program director, there would be 12 of them, would be full time at $25 an hour, which would be $40,000 a year. That would be for ninja, competition gymnastics, recreational gymnastics, competition cheer, recreation cheer, kinder, comp and rec dance, special events, office manager, gym manager, and cleaning crew. In addition, we would have 24 part-time jobs. As I said, on average, in our current location, we're adding six new employees a year. Our further growth goes into our daytime opportunities, which would be yoga or classes from tots to our retired community. And, sorry, it went away. As well as being able to host the competitions. Our impact on Holloman is we ease the transition of relocation. We allow athletes to continue their sport from base to base. We provide consistency for our families during TDYs and deployments. We also offer flexible job opportunities for our military spouses and are willing to work with their schedules as they start integrating into our community. Again, we're a safe place for our airmen, airmen and airwomen to connect with like-minded individuals. Previously, I didn't talk about potential uses for the smaller building or for the rest of the property because it, I was under the understanding that it was about my business as it was. And again, not the five years, but within five years, we would be utilizing those spaces. Some things we're looking at doing is potentially adding a coffee shop or a parent hangout area in the small building, or a maker's space, which is an area where people who have skills, whether it be crafts or automobile, et cetera, have the opportunity to share their skills with members of the community. Another opportunity that has come about is an adult daycare. Potential uses for the remaining property would be a food truck court with a performance space and a dedicated setup space for local food trucks and areas for families to enjoy food and entertainment, a playground where families have the chance to play, or their kids would have a chance to play while their family member is in class, and also a splash pad. In the last meeting, it was brought up that I didn't have any skin in the game and I respectfully disagree. I've invested $85,000 personally. I've been able to purchase all of the equipment to start and additional equipment to allow my business to grow. We've survived despite COVID. We've been in business for seven years and contributed to the community. I'm the last of the four original owners. In addition, my business has never had to take out a loan, which my understanding is what a successful business is all about. I was also requested or asked about what I would do for additional funding and what I would do if I was not granted the full 1.9. My answer to that hasn't changed. I'm a good businesswoman and I will not be ungrateful for any funds that I receive. I will figure out how to continue to grow my business as I have for the last seven years. With that being said, there is a new sense of uncertainty as the landlord of our current location has passed away and I don't know how that yet impacts us. My condolences go out to his family. I did reach out about additional funding. I do not qualify for state LIDA. I reached out to First American Bank. More information was needed. I reached out to the Small Business Association. More business was needed. And one of the loan options would have it where I had two loan payments, which is not a good business decision. I reached out to the Sacramento Foundation and unfortunately, they typically assist nonprofits. So I come back to how XA will be able to pay back LIDA funds if we're awarded them. We will be creating jobs that justify the 1.9 million dollar request that I'm making. In addition, we will be increasing the GRT. Finally, we provide that gap service of being the only gymnastics place in town. I've shown new and more promising numbers here today and I anticipate that you guys will get those, the slideshow and all of that. In addition, we have helped prevent at least four youth suicides. And to me, that is absolutely invaluable. Before I open this up for questions, I have a few more things to say. I stand here before you today as a female, a minority, a local existing business owner. I have answered questions that no other LIDA applicants have had to answer, such as where will I get additional funding? I've submitted further documentation that no other LIDA applicants have had to submit. The LIDA application asks for the last three years of your tax returns. I've been asked to submit and have submitted tax returns for every year that I was an owner, which is the last seven, because I have been an owner since we opened our doors in 2018. I've been identified as an audit threat, even though I'm the only existing local business to be considered for funds compared to the last two LIDA fund recipients. And it makes me wonder, why am I being asked to jump through these additional hoops? Is it because I'm a female or because I'm Native American? Is it because I'm a local business owner or perhaps because my business is in existence? Or is it because of whom I'm related to? I have reevaluated my projected numbers and I'm struggling to see why Extreme Amplitude is not a viable investment opportunity for the city of Alamogordo at our requested amount of 1.9 million dollars. I'm asking that the city of Alamogordo partner with Extreme Amplitude to do what LIDA was created to do and invest in our community, our kids, and our future.
Okay. I'm going to respond just for me.
Please.
I, from the beginning, told you I wasn't comfortable with 1.9. So I, it's a little unfair to say that I changed my mind because I never changed my position. And if you remember, at the last meeting, I reminded you that at the meeting before that, that I wasn't comfortable doing the whole thing. Do you remember that?
I do.
Okay. So my position hasn't changed. I didn't change my mind. In terms of the apartments, we're not talking about the apartments right now. We're talking about you. And, and the way that, that you have phrased that, it's like you think that if we don't give it to you, we're going to give it to them. And those are two separate issues. And so I take them as two separate issues. I will tell you what happened with the apartments from my perspective. The meeting that we had, we thought it had something to do with GRT or wanting their GRT back, right? Isn't that what we got the impression? When I met with him the next day, that was not what it was about. And because it wasn't what I was under the impression that it was, I felt like we owed it to him to at least listen to him. listen to him. I would have done the same thing for anybody, so it had nothing to do with that.
Unfortunately, that's not how the community took, took it, which is why I made sure to clarify that, that it was clarification.
And just, just real quick, the direction was to me not to use LITA funds for housing. I told, and you can talk to Brenner Campbell, I did tell him, I can't bring this back to the commission, because this would be insubordination on my part. However, any one of the seven commissioners have the authority to bring anything in front of the commission, and that was in the, that's in the authority of all seven of them, and so that's how that came about.
Yeah, that was not a diss on you. That was, hey, guys, you thought this was GRT. I did not know, that's why I said, this is drama to me, because I didn't know it was gonna blow up like this. I was trying to give a professional courtesy to somebody who was misunderstood, and that's why he came back. He asked if he could, and I sponsored it because somebody had to. It had nothing to do with you, and it certainly didn't mean that I was saying, we need to do that over this. Because honestly, I said this last time, I will say it again, while I don't agree with giving, and I'm, I've been honest about this from the beginning, while I don't agree with giving you the whole 1.9 million dollars, I might be in favor of giving you a little more than this. And my position has not changed, and I'm a woman too, so it has nothing to do with you being a woman, because I am a woman. I'm, I understand what you're saying, you know, you're a woman in business. I'm a woman in politics. They're, they're equally difficult, trust me. And so, I understand that. But I just, I, I feel like I need to answer for that, because I, the suggestion is that somehow I changed my mind, and I didn't. I've been honest with you from the beginning, as I, I've tried to be honest with you from the beginning. I am not comfortable with that. That is twice as much as we've given anybody else, except for Medlin Ramps, I get it, and they have paid it back. But that's twice as much as we've given anybody else, and what, what I see happening is we give that to you, and then they're gonna be all over us. They're gonna be, you know, we asked for that, and you didn't give us that, but you're giving, we're in a no-win situation here. We really are. Well, okay, I'm not gonna speak for anybody else. I'm gonna tell you that I feel like I'm in a no-win situation here. Either way, I, we're gonna get pounded, one way or the other, and, and so we're in a no-win situation. I'm trying to do the right thing, I am, but what I think is the right thing may not be what you think is the right thing, but I have to, at the end of the day, I have to live with myself and my decision. And so, I, I would hope that, that you could respect that, because I respect your position. You're, you're saying that you've been in business for seven years. Did you say you had to provide five years of tax returns?
I was asked to provide tax returns for every year that I was an owner.
Okay.
So all seven years.
Yes, I recently, I just asked that between the last meeting and this meeting.
Okay, okay. And why did you ask that?
Because of some of the conversations that I had with some of the commissioners, some of the comments that I've had. And just to be clear.
But not me?
Not you, no.
Okay.
Just to be clear, the city has the right to ask for any, any information required to make a financially sound decision. And this was asked of Alex for RAD, and I asked for, for Troy as well, and Michelle Parries was under great scrutiny as well. So, all of this has been, they've all been treated equally.
Okay, okay, so everybody's been asked for tax returns. Okay, all right. Um, okay, so there's that, that kinda.
Well, I acknowledge that. In the LITA application, it says three will be requested. I was asked for seven. That's where my frustration comes from, just so we're clear.
And the ordinance again says anything to make a sound financial decision. This is taxpayers' money.
This is, this is a very, this is a very contentious issue, and it just is, it is. There's, I, listen, I'm gonna tell you, first of all, I'm surprised at the people that watch this meeting. I had no idea, right? Because I'm sitting up here, and I'm like, we're here, this is great, and then all of a sudden, I'm like, I watched the meet, you know, I'm getting these calls, like, I watched the meeting, I watched the meeting, and I'm like, I didn't, and not just this, not just on this issue, in issues in general, I did not realize how many people get online to watch our meetings, or a lot of them actually, the next day, will be like, oh, let me go back and watch the meeting. I didn't realize that. So, so yeah, I mean, I did get a lot of phone calls, and, and it's tough for me, because I do like what you do. I've said that. I very much conveyed to you that I appreciate what you're doing. My heart is for kids, I said that too. None, none of that has changed, none of it. But I have to separate my emotional feelings from doing what's right for the, for the community, and, and it's just like any other decision that, that I have to, and I'm saying I, because I'm not gonna speak for anybody else here, but it's, it's a hard decision, because emotionally, I'm like, oh, my gosh, yeah, you want a pony? Give it here, do this for the kids, like, right? But, but my personal feelings and my professional responsibility are two completely different things, and professionally speaking, I did, I was very honest with you, and I told you that I was not comfortable with the whole 1.9 million. So I'm not, I'm not saying anything that I haven't already said to you, and that I haven't said to you from the beginning. I just, I want you to understand that. As far as skin in the game, listen, RAD, Retrocade, the Sands Theater, they're all putting in some of their own money. They are. There's no way a million dollars is enough for them, so they're all putting in their own money. Michelle with Inkwell, she put in her own money, and that's all I'm saying. All I'm saying is, you know, I think you should have skin in the game, and I, I get that you've invested in the past, but what you're asking for is an expansion, and what I'm saying is, you know, you're talking about business here, right? And, and if you're ready for that expansion, you should have that money to help expand, rather than expecting, you know, us to take care of every, I mean, I'm just trying to be honest with you. I mean, I know, I understand that you may not like me after this, and I'm okay with that, I'm all right. There are a lot of people that don't like me, but I have to be honest at the end of the day, and at the end of the day, I'm saying that as a business owner, you should have an investment too for your expansion, and.
Can I just clarify that, why I asked for more financial statements? Because truly, it was in the best interest, in the best interest, what I was trying to do was in the best interest of Echo and her company, because I wanted to try and get the highest three that I could of all the years of existing of salaries and income, to see if I could justify any more money. This wasn't a, although I, it, it is in my scope to check if you're financially sound. This was to see the salaries. I can go over the salaries, the three-year average that I took, I can go over the income. It, it's been in about two hu- two hundred fifty more. So basically, I was just trying to figure out a way that I could justify any more money, not as a, I'm doing this as a punishment to make you give me more information.
It's not just, yeah, and I think that that's the thing, is I hear your projections, but those, at the end of the day, are projections. You have no way of knowing, right? You have no way of, I mean, I know what you're saying, I hear, I hear what you're saying, but you, but those are projections. At the end of the day, it has to be based on what we know, what we have, what we can prove, and so.
So how is that different from White Sands Theater in the projections they gave, or RAD Retrocade, Retrocade?
Because they, they took their tax returns, and they took three years, four years, whatever it is, averaged it out, and based on that, I'm assuming, is that correct?
So I took their, I, so I took their job creation. We taught, we, they listed out their jobs, their job creations by year. They gave me what they expected, year one, year two, year three, year four, total. And then, of course, I backed that up by what they've done in their like stores, so similar, exactly the same way here. I took the projections that I was given, the twelve jobs at the thirteen to fifteen dollars an hour, and I compared to the salaries to see if that tracks, because if you're gonna have over, I've denied applications that have increased in revenue five hundred percent, but really, the numbers don't justify that. So looking at what this is, salaries, and I'll just do the past three, salaries are ninety-two thousand, ninety-one thousand, and a hundred and forty-five thousand over the past three years, with an average of a hundred and nine thousand. That's at what I presume, twenty-five to thirty jobs. Trying to put that in the contest, context of what I was given as the new job projection, and can it justify? So if you take the hundred thousand over five years, that's about five hundred thousand, if that, and that's doubling what's currently on the books right now, which I can give you the projections, but, I mean, it's informational and justification to see if what's projection tracks with what was done and what, what was on paper, so.
Yeah, and I, so when I said projection, I didn't mean job projection, I meant your projections as far as income, so.
Got a few questions on this, for, mainly for the attorney, I guess. In the event that we do decide to, to give more than what staff's recommending, as far as justifying the amount, you know, job creation's one way, but also benefit to the community, benefit to Holloman, that kinda stuff can be kinda taken into account. How would we word that in a motion? I mean.
So typically.
Because it is, it is in my eyes, it is a benefit to the community and the children and the base, because of the type of business that they operate.
Absolutely, and, and, you know, that, that is taken into account when it comes to justifying a, say, an amount higher than what is recommended, because again, the recommendation, recommendation is just based off of.
The job creation.
We put, we put numbers in a spreadsheet, and that's really all we can do, because it is hard to put a monetary value on, you know.
It's almost like an in-kind service to the community.
So, yeah, but so basically, to, to do a, a motion, it would just have to be very specific in the fact of, and, for example, it would just be, and I started, I figured this question was coming, so I started working. But like, if the person was moving, they would move to approve LITA funding at X amount, subject to the execution, execution of a LITA PPA, the Project Participation Agreement, that includes enforceable job creation, wage, and operational reporting requirements. In doing so, the commission finds that this projection provides valid and valid measurable public benefit by employment opportunities, expanding, in this specific case, would be like, expanding youth athletic programs, contributing to Alamo Gordo's quality of life. We, we would have to like, list those kinds, be very specific in just why we are exceeding the, the formula. So, and, so the question I was just asked is, how does that get audited? So if, for example, ju- just using easy math, the city's recommendation is a hundred thousand, and the commission approves or finds that, and makes a motion, listing those things, community benefit, public, you know, cultural stuff, the culture of Alamo Gordo increase, cooperation with Holloman Air Force Base, and it weighs those in its decision. When that, if that were to get challenged, that is when typically either the state auditor or the Economic Development Department or the EDD would come in, and that's when they start looking at their record, they start looking at the history of, okay, commission, why did you feel that, you know, what, what is the reason for exceeding this? Because then we have to be able to justify it, because we are dealing with taxpayer funds. And so typically, you know, as Edson said, for LITA is usually repaid back in, in dollar-to-dollar through job creation. That's not always the case. And so, when there is, if there is a, or not if, but when there's a scrutiny on it, on that decision by the commission, that's what they'll look to, is was there a rational basis? Was there something that we can show that makes up for that, that dollar amount, especially if there is a difference? So in, in this case, just using the one that we have, the recommendations roughly five hundred thousand, we're, and the request is 1.9. So we'd have to be able to justify to an auditor, to an agency, or to a court, if challenged, how tripling the requested amount proves that public benefit, proves those relationships with Holloman, all of those reasons that, you know, that are in our code as to what LITA is, why it's there for. And so, that kinda motion would, would probably be pretty lengthy, but it would be that, so that way, on the record, because that's the number one thing that they're gonna look at, is the record of the decisions that were made here, things that are said in this, in these meetings. And so, putting the, the reasons, and very detailed reasons as to why the elected body feels that an excess of recommendation, or just the recommendation itself, of funds, that's what they're gonna look to, is, is that detailed record of, of why did the commission vote the way it did? And then, based off of that, you know, then it'd be, again, it'd be up to the fact finder to find out if those, those rational, if those reasons are rational enough to, to explain the difference.
And then, in the event, at the, you know, I don't, you guys got this set up on a five-year or seven-year, five, five-year?
Everything is a five-year, but we extend the contract to seven to give some flexibility in the job creation piece.
In the event, at the end of this, and I, I think we can do this, but in the event that they don't have the money paid back at the end of the five years, we can go to seven or, or nine, or how far can we extend that out?
I have never gone past seven.
Okay, because, you know, obviously, in five to seven years, most of us.
It's a new commission.
May not be here, it may be a different, different commission that's looking at it, but, you know, just to, the, the flexibility in there is kinda my question.
And I would have to look into if, if the state has any guidelines on how far LITA can be extended, because as, as Ms. Echo mentioned earlier, the state brought in LITA on its own, and then later gave it to the cities to kind of, because the cities know what the cities' needs are.
So our current PPA is, is from the state's PPA, so we took it and modified it, so it is a five-year, and then, as the city of Alamo Gordo, we extended to a seven-year.
Okay, and that's the reason I'm asking, is like, you know, Pure Life was brought up at the last meeting, and, and I think that one's been sitting out there for about fifteen years, maybe closer to twenty, and.
Maybe in total, but the latest one was from twenty-twenty-one or two?
Yes, they assumed it when they purchased the building. They assumed it from the previous, but that, that all started about fifteen years ago, so that's why I was wondering on that, if there's any way to extend it, in the event that, you know, if they're close, or the job creation hasn't been met yet, that we don't go forcefully try to take a building back, you know, we have some flexibility. It's kinda how my, what my question was leading to, so, but.
Well, Pure Life is, that's a little unfair, because that was way before any of us were here, so.
I was here for it, but.
Huh?
I was here before, actually.
So you voted on it?
I voted when it was, wasn't Sunbaked, it was whatever it was, between Sunbaked and Marietta. There was three of them.
The rest of us didn't vote on it.
I was here.
The rest of us just got stuck with that, so.
Well, it's true.
There's a question she has here.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I actually have a question, and it's just because I think I was a little confused as to why they wanted to, you know, why Extreme wanted to go past the recommended amount here that was on the, on the agenda, the four hundred and seventy-five. So I, I guess what I'm questioning is, did you know that that's what the recommendation was before you came to the meeting?
Today?
No, in the beginning, when you came.
That first meeting.
October fourteenth.
No, ma'am.
You didn't know that it was.
I sent a letter, yes, I did.
Prior to the fourteenth.
Yes, yes, I have it here somewhere.
What was your original amount you requested when you first applied?
So on September twenty-sixth, I emailed it out to you, and that's when I asked if you wanted to be on the fourteenth meeting, and you had said, yes, you did want to, but by that time, the agenda had closed, that's why we put it on the twenty-eighth meeting. So I emailed it out, and on that, I said, you would qualify for an award of four hundred and sixty thousand, which I would more than likely recommend rounding up to four seventy-five.
I stand corrected.
What was your original?
My original amount was three million, because that's what Ms. Hernandez told me was left in it, with the knowledge that a new build of this same size was going to cost four million dollars.
Okay.
Can I?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead, sorry.
I also wanted to ask, would your annual income change from six hundred thousand with the new sal, I mean, with everything else that you would have done?
That would be my new income.
That would be your new income?
Yes, ma'am.
And then you said. And then you said, in, because I read the other report, and I just wanted to.
Yes, ma'am.
Because when I read through it, it said that you would not have any full-time jobs, all the jobs would be part-time, and I, I'm just telling you where I see.
Yes, ma'am.
But when I looked at it, I looked at 12, you were going to add 10 more jobs, so instead of having 30, you would have 40.
Yes, so I misunderstood what the requirement was for the presentation and the information to be given to the city. I gave it for basically year one, moving into that building, not what our five-year projections would be. So after the last meeting, when I had a clear understanding that it was going to be a five-year projection, then I adjusted my numbers to show that, which is where the 12 full-time jobs would come from and the 24 additional part-time jobs.
Could you repeat that again?
Yes, ma'am, 12 full-time jobs.
Okay, so, I didn't see that in the report.
No, ma'am, unfortunately, my presentation that I had for today did not send for whatever reason. So I have sent that now to Ms. Rachel and to Dr. Hernandez, so that you guys can have that information.
So when, when did we get that? I mean, did I, I don't think I.
I would have emailed it to you, but that's not allowed.
No, it was, I just got it like at 6:50.
Yes.
Right now.
Can I?
Yes, ma'am, because it didn't go through earlier today when I sent it.
So your salaries would go from $100,000 to what?
Hmm, let me do some quick math here. So we're averaging that the full-time employees would be making $40,000 times 12. That takes us to $480,000 for our, our full-time employees, and then we have 24 part-time employees times, we'll do the lower amount of $11,000 right here, and that's $264,000.
So I'm, that's.
So that puts us at.
$664,000?
That puts us at $744,000.
And that's over five years?
Yes.
Okay. Do, would you be able to go print out her little deal and get us a copy of it real quick, or?
I.
Is it, how long of a presentation is it?
I, you, you know, this is, this is a little confusing for me, and I, I want to make the, the right decision, and especially dealing with the taxpayers' money. And I, I said, I understand that you said you didn't have your information on here, but when we look at what you would get annually, that's, I, I'm just looking at the salaries, so that's basically, that's eating up what you would project in, in revenue, the salaries would, because even though you're not going to be paying benefits, I, I'm just looking at, and so my mind is kind of like, I, I have to see it on paper to see how it's working out. So I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to be messing with this money and not understand, especially since we are saying that we would rather go over the $475,000 designated dollars when it's actually been calculated. So I, I know that you want the money, but I also want to do what's right, and I know that we have people on the commission who are, you know, ready to, you know, give you more money. But I, I have a problem going over the dollar amount that's been designated based on the facts, and so until we can get the new facts, I just think this, I, you know, to continue, I don't, I don't think this is a good thing for us to be talking about taxpayers' money to the total 1.9, and we don't have all of the information.
I don't disagree.
With your.
Commissioner Tapley, oh, I'm sorry, did somebody else?
I, I agree with Commissioner McDonald. Can we have this written so we can look at it and go down?
Yes, because, so to be fair, I did meet with Mrs. Johnson and Ms. Cobal before and told them what was the job payback in five years. So that's what I calculated on, with the information I had, okay? So that, and when I asked how much, how many hours, it was, I believe, 16. So that's what they're based on, but now it's changing, and I have, I can't give any opinion on what's changing.
So again, as I proposed last weekend, we put this off until we have the correct figures, because we all have to answer to the taxpayers. We have to answer, why did you make that decision? And right now, it's not clear.
It's not.
If we wanted to add more, it, it's not clear.
And her presentation, is the job creation numbers, are they in your presentation?
In the one I've sent tonight, yes.
The one you sent?
Yes.
So now, so your job creation numbers have changed?
Yes.
And what changed? How did that change, or why did that change?
It went from the 12 or 10 part-time jobs to the now 12 full-time and 24 part-time with the projections over the five years.
Okay, so why did that change?
Because I was unaware or unsure that it was for the five years. And the last meeting made it very clear that it was projections for, over the five years. I was looking at it, what we would be able to do, opening our doors within year one.
Commissioner Tapley, you're a businessman, what do you think?
Um.
No pressure, just ask.
Just no pressure, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I don't see it, I mean, I just don't see it, I mean, and if we're doing $475,000, I have no issue. 1.9, it's just that the numbers are not there. I, I can't tell you, I mean, it's just exactly what she said, you're, you're projecting $600,000, and you're eating it up with, with salaries of $700.
So the monthly income with our increase would be $153,000 monthly?
Yeah, that's if you fill the doors every day, I mean, that's, that's.
Right.
I mean, the doors weren't filled last night when I went by there, so. But I've been, I don't, that's it, hold on one second, I'm good.
Yeah, I, oh my gosh, I, I'm sorry, I can't, I can't do it. I love what you're doing, but I can't do it. You know, I, I run a nonprofit, I have to write grants all the time, and one thing I learned a long time ago in grant writing is, you have to stick to the numbers. You can't, you can't put the emotion in it of, you know, what great work we do and that kind of thing. And so I learned that a long time ago, because the first time I wrote a grant, they turned me down, because I was like, oh, we feed this many people, and we do this and that. Grant writers don't care about that, what does that have to do with this? It's, it's really the same thing, like, I appreciate what you're doing, I do, I, I can't emphasize that enough. But it has nothing to do with the facts, and the facts are your numbers, your projections. All of the sudden, you went from $12 an hour to $25 an hour, you went from part-time to full-time. I, I don't understand it, and quite frankly, I, if I'm to be honest with you, people watching this meeting, and this has become such a hot topic, I'm sure there are a lot of people watching this meeting, but people watching this meeting are probably thinking what I would be thinking, which is, you're kind of messing with the numbers to make it look better. I'm not saying you are, but I'm.
I got a couple more questions.
Listen, I know, I am not saying you are, that is not what I'm saying, so please understand that. What I'm telling you is the perception from people that are watching, and you, I'm sorry, but that's how I feel about it, and I, I, I'm just telling you how I feel about it. I'm going to go back to the Family Fund Center, okay? I was in the middle of what could have been very scandalous, I was in the middle of what could have been, if it wasn't so bogus, it could have been a state audit. We were, people were expecting us to be taken out in handcuffs, and I am gun-shy about that, and I will always be gun-shy about that. So I am very particular when it comes to LITA. I want to make sure that I can justify every dollar, and I'm sorry, but when you've been under the gun with a state auditor for something like that, and you're thinking, did I do something wrong? Did I make a mistake? Did I not listen to the right people? It does make you gun-shy, and I'm, I'm standing firm on that position. I, it was an uncomfortable feeling to be in, and I'm not putting myself in that position again. I, again, told you from the beginning, I'm not comfortable with 1.9, I might be comfortable with a little more than $475,000, but to me, it doesn't justify it, it just doesn't, and I'm.
Can I say something real quick?
I.
No.
You didn't come up to the mic, yeah.
So I'm Craig Johnson, I'm her husband, so I think what's getting lost here is, her income is going to, what she's giving you for her income numbers is monthly, what she's giving you for payroll is yearly. So her income is not getting ate up by her, or her payroll is not eating up her income. So her income is 100 and.
It's going to be the 153,000 a month.
153,000 a month, thus, the 744,000 that she's giving you is her yearly income, or, yeah, her yearly payroll. So she's paying out 744,000 of the roughly 1.3 something million dollars or something like that, that she's going to bring in on a yearly account. As far as everybody in the doors, you know, the place packed all the time, she is, she's over capacity right now, she has a waitlist of what we can put in the building. So increase in her income, her income and her payroll and all of that is all, you know, on a yearly basis, it's a different number than what she's giving you, because she's giving you her monthly income, which is 153,000.
I, and I understand all that, but that's not what the application says, that's not what's out there.
Right, so before we make a decision on this, and everybody says you're playing with the numbers and you're doing all of this.
No, I did not say that, I did not say that.
Can I make a comment?
No, I said, there's a perception of it, that's different.
Can I ask a question? Before we do this, can she get the new numbers, because now she's projecting it at five years instead of year one?
That's my point. Counselor, can we, is this the form we're going to vote on? Because this is very confused now.
We can table for another two weeks.
I don't, I'm not in.
We don't have anything, we don't have anything that's correct that we can vote on.
We don't have the data.
We don't.
That she sent in, but I got one more, couple of questions on this, too. If I'm not mistaken, you know, the LITA tax was rededicated to the, to the, the natorium down there. At the end of this year, if we don't have this money spent, where does it go?
It stays.
It stays in the LITA? It doesn't sunset with the tax?
No.
Okay, so we have a little bit of flexibility in time as far as that goes?
Yes.
Okay.
There, there's just no new funds coming into it, that, since that tax is done.
Even though it sunsets, we just, we have to spend it on LITA?
Correct, it's still there.
Okay, I just wanted to, I, I kind of agree with Commissioner Robinson. We should have had it, but it didn't send, so we don't have the information tonight.
Well, we wouldn't have had it anyways, really, the numbers, because I just.
I guess it didn't get published yet, it didn't get published correctly.
And I wouldn't have been able to do anything on it. So just to give you just a rough estimate, so if you're doubling your jobs at a, what I'm understanding, so right now, you have about, average between the last three years, your salaries are about $109,000 currently. And how many jobs is that?
30.
So if you're doubling that, you only can, only the new jobs, so that would be 109 over the five years.
For new job creation?
Yes, I understand that, so you're projecting, you're adding 30 jobs a year?
Over the five years, it would be 36 new jobs that would get added.
So that's what I'm saying, even on year one, if you add 30 new jobs at 109,000 of salaries, just saying that 30 year, 30, it's, still only comes out to 548. And just looking at the past income, you, it's never increased over, I mean, it's had modest increases, 215 to 268 to 300, and then last year was 289. Payroll has increased, 84, 92, 91, 145. So I'm, I'm just putting this kind of, trying to summarize it, because these are valid concerns, because I have denied people in the past that they've projected a crazy amount of revenue income, that they had 200,000, now they're going to a million, like, how is that laid out?
Would it be possible if her presentation that had it all broke down, you have it all in your presentation, you have it all broke down, correct? The job creation, you have it in writing and numbers and, where it's easy to read?
Yes.
How do y'all feel about tabling this until the next meeting and we get the presentation?
So moved.
No, I'm not in favor of tabling it.
Okay, well, I'm.
We've been dragging this out a long time.
I'm on a second Commissioner Robinson's.
You have a motion and you have a second?
I'm on a second, his motion, and, and I want to see the numbers before I make a decision.
Okay.
Yeah, and we can't vote unless we do, so.
I understand.
Yeah.
Okay, I want to clarify something.
There's a motion and a second?
I know there is, so now I want to clarify something. I did not say you were fudging the numbers, please don't misunderstand me. I said, I'm trying, let me clarify, it's not exactly what I said, but I'm going to clarify. I'm trying to project or perceive what phone calls I'm going to get tomorrow, because I assure you, I'm going to get them, I promise you I will. And I'm trying to perceive or understand or think about what people are going to say, and what I'm telling you is, that's probably one of the things they're going to say, because it, it changed so dramatically. It went from $12 an hour, 12 part-time jobs, to $25 an hour and all these full-time jobs. Please understand that, how that looks. I'm not saying you're doing anything wrong, and I don't want you to think that I do, that I think that, but I.
Can I call the question on this? We have a motion and a second on the floor. Can I call the question?
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
I just want to get it, I want to get it voted in.
And I just wanted to clarify, because I don't want anybody to think I'm suggesting anything other than.
I've already called the question.
What it sounded like.
Question.
Fine, can we put up the vote, please?
And that is to table, is that correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Yes. It's yes or no to table.
So that passes?
I don't know what just happened.
That passes, because it's a 3-2.
It, it got passed that you tabled this, that was the motion.
So is it tabled?
Tabled till the next meeting.
It's tabled.
Okay, it's tabled to the next meeting.
And just remember, I won't be here, so.
But the, the facts and the, the printout will be.
Can we get that, that a little early? I guess we'll get it in the agenda pack next week.
Yes, and I, yes, so I'll add Ms. Echo's presentation to the, to the, if nothing else changes, to the agenda item.
And for the, if anything else needs to be added to the agenda item and needs to be in by?
The Tuesday prior to the next meeting.
So that is a, that is a holiday, correct? So what's the date?
So, let's see.
Next Tuesday is a holiday, huh, Veterans Day?
Yeah.
It is, so if you can just get it to me by noon on the 12th, Wednesday, next Wednesday? Any items that you want attached, Ms. Echo?
Okay. Okay. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn into executive session, executive closed se, I'm going to read this, because there's a lot of people watching. Adjourn into executive closed session in compliance with 10-15-1 to discuss limited personnel matters, city manager. I have a motion from Commissioner Riordan, do I have a second?
A second.
Who was that? A second from Commissioner Tapley, can we put up the vote, please? And motion passes 7-0, we're adjourned.